Good evening and welcome to the Carnegie Town Hall. This meeting of the City Planning Commission will begin with a few introductory remarks. The City of Sioux Falls Planning Commission serves as an advisory board to the City Council. It is the responsibility of the Planning Commission to consider and make recommendations on land use and zoning matters. Actions taken tonight on conditional use permits are final unless appealed to the City Council in writing within five days. And any actions taken tonight on final development plans, design review, or minor amendments are final. Any recommendations made on preliminary subdivision plan requests tonight will be referred to the City Council for final action at the third council meeting of this month or at the first council meeting of next month if associated with a rezoning or major amendment. Any recommendations made on zoning requests, major amendments, future land use amendments, or ordinance amendments tonight will be referred to the City Council for final action at the first council meeting of next month. Council meetings are held at 7:00 PM here in the Carnegie Town Hall and are televised. The Planning Commission will first approve the consent agenda and then the regular agenda. In order to place certain non-controversial items on the Commission's consent agenda, planning staff in the Planning Commission apply the following criteria. First, the request conforms with the Shape Sioux Falls 2035 Comprehensive Plan. Second, planning staff recommends approval of the request. Third, there are no audience members present or written comments received in opposition to the request. And fourth, the application meets all conditions and requirements of the Sioux Falls zoning ordinance. For the regular agenda, the following normal public hearing procedure will be followed for each item. By first requesting planning staff to present a brief report on that item, second, the petitioner or representative will be requested to come forward to make a statement or answer questions. After the petitioner has spoken, anyone from the audience who wishes to address the agenda item shall be recognized. Then, the Planning Commission will discuss the matter further and take appropriate action. We ask that anyone addressing the Planning Commission move to the podium microphone, identify themselves for the record. Please limit your comments to less than five minutes. As a courtesy to everyone here tonight, we ask you that you please either turn off or silence your electronic devices. This meeting is being televised on Channel 16 and will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 AM, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, and Wednesday at 1:00 AM. Thank you for your cooperation. Good evening, everyone, and I welcome you to this evening's Planning Commission. We'll begin by reading the items on the consent agenda. First item on the consent agenda is approval of the November 2nd minutes of the regular meeting. Item number two is Platts. Item number three is a major amendment to SubArea A of Sioux Falls Plaza Plan Development District to amend regulations for inclusion of an event center at 1111 Northwest Avenue. Number four is a conditional use permit in C3 Central Business District to allow an on sale alcohol establishment at 40402 North Main. Item number five is a final development plan and a minor amendment in SubArea G of the Dolly Farm Village to construct a retail furniture store and to increase allowed building height from 25 feet to 35 feet at northwest corner of Highline Place and Highline Avenue. Number six is an ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls amending the revised ordinances of the city by amending minimal amendments for parking. Any questions? Are there any items on the consent agenda that some that would like to be moved to the full agenda?
Madam Chair, I would request item number three to be moved to the regular agenda.
Any other items? Any members of the audience are here to speak on any of these items this evening? Okay. I'll look for a motion and an action to approve the consent agenda moving item number three to the regular agenda.
Madam Chair, I'd make the motion to approve the consent agenda with item number three being moved to the regular agenda.
I'll second that.
You have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. The consent agenda carries. I will look for a motion and a second for approval of the regular agenda.
Madam Chair, I'll move for approval of the regular agenda.
I'll second it.
Motion is second to approve the regular agenda. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries for the regular agenda. We'll begin the regular agenda with item number three, a major amendment to SubArea A of the Plan Development District.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Commission. My name is David Loveland, representing planning staff on this and another item this evening. Item number three, as noted, is a major amendment to SubArea A of the Sioux Falls Plaza Plan Development District to amend the regulations for the inclusion of an event center. The applicant is proposing to amend the existing regulations to ensure an event center and related activities are allowed land uses. The location is at Northwestern Avenue and West Russell Street. The area in size is just under 36 acres, and the City Council will consider this major amendment on the on the second reading on January 3rd of 2012. The abutting zoning and land uses include largely commercial and office uses to the east, north, and south, and then some residential uses just to the west. The Sioux Falls Plaza Plan Development District was created in order to allow community complexes composed of athletic facilities, arenas, convention centers, and other large-scale community facilities. The proposed amendments to the regulations are written in your staff report and are available on the city's website. Just to go through, a couple of the highlights would be to just add land uses that would include an event center, full-service restaurant, things like that, and then to change the height of the buildings to be allowed to 150 feet. Things like landscaping, parking, and signage would be developed by master plans and then available at a final development plan stage for final consideration. The proposal for a new event center at this location was approved for vote in November of 2011. The subject property is currently home to the arena, convention center, Howard Woodfield Field, and the Sioux Falls Stadium. The proposed event center complements and enhances the existing uses. Once completed, the final designs for the event center will be available to the public in 2012 and presented to the Planning Commission. A final development plan for any new structure will require approval by the Planning Commission. Because the subject application is in conformance with the intent of the Plan Development District and with the 2035 Shape Sioux Falls Comprehensive Plan, staff is recommending approval of the major amendment with the subarea regulations as noted within your staff report. And we have not received any calls on this item, and that concludes staff report.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions, Dave?
Madam Chair, Dave, thank you for that explanation. And I asked for that. I had received a couple of questions. And one, you answered, if we approve this this evening, this will go to the council for also their approval.
That's correct, yep.
And the other question I had related to parking. And one of the exceptions, and I think what we're saying, is there a matrix or something that describes how many parking spaces you need for something? Is that what you guys are trying to determine right now?
Yeah, that's exactly right. I think as part of the final design phase of the event center complex and and the related activities, they're undergoing some design schematics, and then ultimately the parking requirements will be determined by the need that's that's evaluated as part of the final design. So, the parking would be the final parking allotments and and things like that will be available to you and the public in 2012 and then presented as part of the final development plan.
Excellent. So there'll be a final development plan done that'll show you and everybody the parking, the landscaping?
Yep.
That'll come back to this commission for approval when that's completed.
That's correct.
David, that was all my questions. Thank you. You did a fine job there.
Thank you, Dave. Any other questions for Dave? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is the petitioner here, please?
I'm Jeff Hazard with Coke Hazard Architects, 431 North Phillips Avenue. I don't have anything substantial to add to what's already been said. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions?
Madam Chair, Jeff, Dave kind of explained some 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 questions I had gotten in regards to that matter, and I think that answer satisfactorily to me, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Jeff. I'll look for a motion on item number three. I'm sorry, is there any audience, any other audience members that would like to speak on this item? Great. I'll look for a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll move for approval.
I'll second.
You have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying yes. I'm sorry, any discussion on item three? You can tell I was on vacation for a month. Any discussion on item number three? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. Item number three carries. We'll move on to now item number seven. Staff report, please.
Good evening again. Item number seven is a bit of an unusual petition before you. It's a revocation hearing on the on conditional use permit number 2009-05-05. The original applicant is with Blue Nile Auto, and he is here in the audience this evening. The planning and fire departments have requested that the Planning Commission and City Council consider revocation of the existing conditional use permit due to numerous violations of city ordinances over the past two years. The general location of the facility is at 601 West 10th Street. It's just under a third of an acre in size. The existing zoning is in the C2 General Commercial District. The existing land use is motor vehicle sales and service, and the Shape Sioux Falls designation is for neighborhood redevelopment, which is a pedigree heights neighborhood plan. This revocation would be considered by the City Council on December 19th. Abutting zoning and land uses to the north, southeast, and west is all commercial zoning, but residential structures occupy land to the north and to the south for compatibility rating of two. One of the things that we need to consider when evaluating a revocation recommendation is written within city ordinances, and that's the first one that that you should be cognizant of is Chapter 1567, and it's titled Validity of the Permit. And what that basically states is that the issuance or granting of a permit or approval of plan shall not be construed, and this is approval of the conditional use permit, shall not be construed to be a permit for violations of any provisions of the zoning ordinance or any other ordinance of the jurisdiction, which is the City of Sioux Falls. No permit presuming to give authority to violate or cancel the provisions of this title shall be valid. So the conditional use permit standard that you'd be looking at is motor vehicle sales, display, and rental, and that and the intent of that district is noted in your staff report. Chapter 1559 is the title under which you're allowed to consider a permit revocation. It basically states that if the director finds at any time that the terms, conditions, requirement of the conditional use permit have not been complied with, or any phase thereof has not been completed within the time required, the director or staff shall report this to the to the Planning Commission and the City Council. After and after conducting a public hearing of which the permitee shall be notified, submit and the Planning Commission shall submit a recommendation to the City Council for their consideration and action. The council may, after a public hearing of which the permitee shall be notified, revoke such conditional use permit for failure to comply with with such terms, conditions, and requirements, or take such other action as it may be as it may deem necessary to obtain compliance. To analyze exactly what's occurred, in June of 2009, the Planning Commission approved a conditional use permit for motor vehicle sales and service at 601 West 10th Street and as was applied for by the applicant listed above. Since the opening of the establishment later that same year, numerous violations of the adopted zoning ordinance and fire code have been recorded and brought to the owner's attention. Despite numerous notice of violations, citations, and meetings conducted with the owner of the violation, the owner, the violations have continued, and the applicant was notified in a letter dated November 9th, 2011, that the Planning Commission would be considering revocation of the conditional use permit at the December 7th, 2011 meeting. Now, I've listed within your staff report a timeline of exactly what's occurred as far as the violations, the meetings, some of the discussion that's occurred, and what he has faced. Any further details, I'll let you ask about those, so I don't want to read them verbatim at the moment for the sake of expediency, but feel free to ask myself or Dean Lanier with Fire Department, who's in the audience, too. In addition to the above recorded timeline, several meetings over the past two years with the applicant have been conducted by staff members of the planning, zoning, and fire departments in order to inform the applicant of the concerns, provide possible action and to provide possible actions to resolve the issues noted. Despite numerous attempts by city staff to work with the applicant to comply with codes, excuse me, and current violations, the applicant, owner of Blue Nile Auto, continues to be out of compliance with zoning ordinance and fire code. At this time, staff believes the nature of the violations constitute a threat to the health, safety, and welfare of the owner, employees, and neighbors of the establishment, and is recommending review and action to the Planning Commission and City Council. Because the applicant has had numerous opportunities in time to correct multiple serious violations of the adopted fire code and has considered continued to operate the business in a manner that is not in conformance with the C2 General Commercial District, imposes a risk to the health, safety, and welfare of the employees and neighbors, the Planning Commission should recommend a revocation hearing with City Council regarding conditional use permit 2009-05-05. And that concludes staff report.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions for Dave?
Madam Chair, David, I think I heard you say this correctly. What you're looking for is a recommendation.
Yeah, the Planning Commission will issue a recommendation, so you'll be recommending to the City Council that they either revoke or not revoke the condition.
So the City Council has the final say?
That's correct.
Either way?
Either way, yep. You're issuing a recommendation to the council.
So the recommendation can be to do it, it can be not to do it.
Yep.
But either way, it'll go to City Council.
That's correct, on December 19th.
Your department doesn't get involved directly in some of these violations. These are other departments in the city?
The Fire Department administers fire code under the fire inspection, and Dean Lanier can talk can speak specifically to some of those issues. You know, to note, too, we have had zoning ordinance violations as well at this site, and so collaboratively, the Fire Department and planning departments have brought this request to you.
The zoning office would have went out there and did an inspection and had a visit with this individual.
Yep, on a couple of occasions.
Your particular office, you've never visited with this gentleman in regards to this?
Oh, yeah. We've had several discussions with him over the two years and have talked to him, tried to work some solutions out about what his process should be, what he needs to do, and those types of things, and we've continued to observe incidents where he has violated the ordinance and the initial approval of the conditional use.
Thank you, David.
Additional questions, Dave? Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Is the petitioner here this evening?
My name is Kefi Allo, Blue Nile Auto owner.
Did you get that?
I did. I did a mistake. I promised you guys, but it's not, you know, it's not going to happen again. I will take responsibility. I ask you guys to give me one more chance.
Any questions of the petitioner?
Do you own or is this property leased?
I own.
You own this property?
Yeah.
Okay.
You're good.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Some of these violations started in '09 that we're looking at here. When Dave says they've talked to you a number of times in regards to this, some of bringing things back into compliance, why would it continue to happen?
I did most of, I mean, most of the stuff I did was they asked me. I removed all junk cars. I cleaned my lot much better than what it used to be in 2009. You know, I did most of, I mean, almost most of the thing I was told.
The latest infraction was October 17th, and it appeared to have to do with the fire inspection that, you know, there was an infraction June for, I think, the same thing. Back in April of 2010, it looks like the same infraction. And I mean, why would that continue to happen?
The last time I was out of town, but still I will take responsibility, but it's one of the guy, I was not in town here, what happened here. You know, just this happened, I was not, you know, in the town, out of town.
Okay, thank you.
But most of the things they asked me remove, you know, I did all of the cleanup, throw away a lot of cars, and I cleaned my lot. No, nothing outside, storage, you know, you know, just much better than what it used to be.
Could you see here where this takes a lot of time for some of the varying departments? This doesn't happen very often. I think there might just be a frustration on the city's part that there's a fear you won't you won't adhere by the rules. And I'm not sure what you can say here that might make them feel different to that.
I promise, but I just rent another building out of the town, T, but our promise is not going to happen again.
Okay, thank you.
I ask you one more chance.
Are there, excuse, hang on one second, sir. Are there any additional quick questions of the petitioner?
You talk about one more chance, but I counted six violations for that spray booth. I mean, how, it seems like a seventh chance to me, but, you know, if you haven't completed two years, you've had six different vi, six violations for the same issue. I'm just wondering what, why that has kept happening.
I had two, I don't know, twice, I got tickets, two tickets, I don't know.
With the timeline I have here, the first one was December 21st, 2009. There was a fire inspection in an illegal spray booth. April 7th, 2010, October 14th, 2010, February 3rd, 2011, March 30th, 2011, and October 17th, 2011, all for the same violation.
But I have to check, I got, I think, two times ticket, I don't know what.
You may have only gotten ticketed two times, sir, but they have been there to see that you're in violation more than twice on the same on the same item as the commissioner said.
I have to check that one, but I'm not sure. Maybe outside storage, maybe that's, I don't, the fire, the paint, I got like two, twice tickets.
Is the spray operation still?
No, I rent the building in T right now, but I'm not doing, you know, anything that, so.
Sir, if we came to your facility today, are you in 100% compliance?
Yeah, I'm 100%.
You have nothing stored outside?
Nothing.
It's not to be stored outside?
The fire marshal came Friday, it's last week, and he checked everything, so nothing.
And you have no paint materials there anywhere?
No, I promise, no.
I'm sorry, who came Friday and checked it out?
Yeah, the fire marshal came last week, Friday, and checked all my building.
I can tell you, I've been a commissioner quite some time, and it certainly is our interest to encourage small businesses like yours within the City of Sioux Falls. As Commissioner Dunlap said, rarely does this happen, but for the Fire Department and the enforcement officer to recommend a revocation of your conditional use permit, they do fear that you are a hazard to your neighborhood, and in having an illegal spray operation is a serious violation of that. And I understand you're a small business, I understand that those items are expensive to put in, but I would concur with some of the other commissioners. I think this has been given ample opportunity to bring your business within compliance.
Okay.
Any other questions of the petitioner? Thank you, sir. Any other members? Are you with the petitioner come board?
My name's Michael Hanson. I'm an attorney here in Sioux Falls. My office is blocked from Kalu's business, and over the years, I've done some work off and on for Kalu. I guess I, you can tell he's an immigrant to this country, he doesn't speak that well, so I met with him this afternoon, and I told him I'd come here and kind of verbalize some of his thoughts for you. First of all, if you look, some of the complaints early on were about his lot. He's cleaned up the lot, and if you look, there are no more complaints about that. There were complaints about cars that were in disrepair or needed repair being stored out in the open. That's come to an end. There was for a while some complaints about him doing work on cars that did not belong to him. That ceased. He only works on the cars which he buys, and his business, he primarily buys cars down at the auction yard down in T and a couple other auction yards, most of whom have been insurance cars or cars that have been in minor wrecks, and he used to fix some of them up, but he also buys a lot of what I'd call good-used cars to sell, and primarily his customers are members of the immigrant community here in Sioux Falls. And if you look, you'll see early on in that packet that there were complaints about cars in disrepair parked. Talked to him, that came to an end. There were complaints about cars that are undergoing repairs, being parked in the open, that came to an end. There was a complaint about no fence around his garbage cans. If you drive by there, you'll see there's a tall wooden fence around the garbage can area. No car parts are kept outside. If you drive by there, unlike in the pictures you see in here, you'll see no car parts or parts of cars being stored alongside the building or in the driveway. There are no inoperable vehicles parked on the property, and only operable vehicles which are for sale are parked on the lot. If you look, early on, there was some complaints about cars that were for sale being parked on the street. If you read the materials, that came to an end. Last week, the fire marshal did pay a visit to my client's business, and as my client said, he looked through everything, opened every door, every shelf, every container to see if there's any paint there. There's no paint there. My client put an end to the painting there months ago. What had happened on the last violation is he was out of town. For some of the work that's done on his car, he as an individual who no longer does it, who he would just quote him a price, he'd say for $500,000, "I'll fix the car and I'll do this work," and he'd come to the garage and do the work. My client told him not to paint there anymore. This guy brought his stuff, painted the vehicle there, the fire marshal came. My client no longer uses this man, told him to leave. Before this happened, my client had rented a building in T, which he is setting up to paint cars, and any cars that need work on are going to be done in T at a building that he rents there. They're also going to do most of the car repair work at that building in T and primarily use the property that's here now for the sale of vehicles. But, you know, I heard some questions being asked to my client, "Well, on this car painting thing, it's continued, it's continued, and we come out there and we find problems." They came out there last week, and it's done. They tore it apart, couldn't even find a drop of paint out there, so the painting's And the only cars that are worked on now, if you've driven by the business, it's basically an old gas station that has a twin, you know, doors where there'd be service bay areas, and inside there, minor work is done on cars. Planning people, my client has told me, I told him a while back, not to do any, quote, "major repairs there, pull motors out or do heavy construction." He just does minor repair work there now, nothing that's going to require a lot of heavy equipment or torches or that type of items. And I guess I just asked you, yeah, if you look through that timeline there, you'll see various sites, but if you look, except for the painting thing, they've all been But if you look, except for the painting thing, they've all been corrected. And this painting thing has come to an end. You got his attention, thank you.
Any questions?
Wait a minute, Mike.
Yes, I have, I have a question. You say, it was the complaint, put it this way, if they wouldn't have had so many complaints, would it be cleaned up? I have to ask that question. The complaints were cleaned up. Back in June, he received a letter from the city planning commission stating that he was issued a permit, conditional use permit. One of the stipulations was no outdoor storage. Why, I got to ask this question, how come we had to have so many complaints? Early on, he got a letter stating what his stipulations were for this conditional use permit. How come it took complaints for him to comply in more than one?
I can't answer that, I'm not him.
I know, that's a tough question, and you're the one that had brought that up, that the complaints were taken care of. But it took a number of times early on to get those complaints finished. Yes, I guess it's hard for me to accept what he's at, what he's saying he will do when he hasn't done it so many times. And it took so many, so much time and effort to get him to clean it up the first time and the second time.
Well, for some of these, if you look, I don't think there was a second time they're cleaned up the first time. The painting is the problem area here. The rest of them, the way I looked at the timeline, which I downloaded off the internet, did he, it appeared to me, most of those, if not all of them, were corrected.
Eventually, yes.
Yeah, eventually.
Additional questions, Mike?
You know, I thought I did, but Steve asked it for me. Thank you, Steve, thank you, Mike.
It's just one, I mean, you say the, the painting has ended, but it hasn't six times in the past, why should we believe that it has now?
Well, then the fire marshal paid him a visit last week and they found nothing there. How can you paint cars if you don't have any paint there or spray guns or compressors?
But that's also happened in the past too. The fire marshal has visited and found no spray equipment, and it shows up again.
Well, the last violation, speaking to my client, the individual who's doing the painting brought the stuff there. It wasn't my client's materials, what my client told me. And that man no longer does work for him.
I guess the time, the, my question is, so February 16th, the fire marshal came and there was no violations. And then March, sorry, June 17th, he came and their spraying was back. So I guess what I'm saying is I'm having a hard time believing that it's actually done.
Well, I mean, he was there, he's told me it's done. I mean, sometimes, you know, until you're right in the hot seat facing it, then it's done, you get the point. It is a successful business, he's been very generous to the community. I know he has helped a lot of people in this community. And really, you know, it's the paint issue that's here. I think everything else has been cleaned up. Last inspection shows no paint. I mean, he realizes if you give him one more shot, if they find a spray paint gun there or any paint there, he's toast.
Any additional questions, Mike? Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Anybody from the audience here to speak on this item tonight?
Madam Chair, would it be appropriate to call the fire marshal up to?
Good afternoon, Commissioner. Dean Lanier, Sioux Falls Fire Rescue Fire Marshal Division Chief. I'm here to really explain to you the risks and the hazards associated with this process of spray painting. It's not my view to try to sway you one way or another, just to give it to you how it is as far as the risks associated with this property. 601 West 10th Street is proximate to several different residences in the close area. If you notice, to the immediate south, there's a single-family home residence within 10 feet of this, of this building. Directly to the west, within 25 to 30 feet, there is another residential property, property within, within that area span. Realistically, what kind of hazards are we looking at? The gamut is wide and the risks are wide as well. What you're looking at when you're applying a flammable finish to a car is you're really looking at atomizing a flammable substance. So you're breaking that thing down and spraying it in a wide pattern on the vehicle. Yes, it needs, it provides a beautiful finish to the car, nice and shiny that we all like, but that process is very hazardous while you're doing it. Fire code requires, in several different chapters, proper ventilation, proper electric, and proper processes. What that basically means is there needs to be a surrounding of that area, there needs to be air movement through that space, and there needs to be an absence of ignition sources. Those are really how you have a fire, having the three angles of the triangle for a fire to happen in the first place. This is really what we're talking about. Flammable products being sprayed and applied to the car. You see the gun there, this is what we found on the 17th of October when we went to his business. You'll note the time in which we went to the business owner's address was 21:24 at night. There's a couple of different reasons for this. We just, there was a complaint called in, we have an on-call fire investigator that's on 24 hours. So when a complaint is called in and someone tells us there's a problem, we have an investigator that's available to go out and investigate that scene. So at 21:24 hours is when we arrived on scene to take a look at this business the last time we showed up.
Excuse me, can we assume then that fumes were what would cause that complaint at that time of the evening?
That's generally what you're going to get a complaint about, neighbor smell, fumes, that kind of thing.
Okay.
Generally, it's very hard to dissipate the fumes associated with spray painting a car. Hard thing to make go away.
Thank you.
More pictures of the cars. I wanted to give you a scope of how much space are we talking about? This is the whole front end of a car. More than, let's say, nine to 12 square feet in area. We're looking at a room that he's spraying in with the dimensions of 40 feet by 30 feet by 10 feet. In proximal terms, that's, we're talking about 12,000 cubic feet of area in which flammable vapors can be trapped and held. That's 12,000 cubic feet. If there's an ignition source within that 12,000 of cubic feet, I can't really give you a good analogy of what you're looking at in size and scope. What I can tell you is, is that you're really talking about one of three different possibilities. An explosion, a large fire, or a sweeping fire that immediately goes out, but then catches other things on fire around it. So at best, what we'd be looking at is a building on fire. At best. That would be the least amount of damage that we're talking about. Why the necessity of the compressor? Because compressors are commonly used in repair garages to power, power tools, both wrenches and, and other power equipment, taking off tires. That's a common thing. However, compressors are also necessary to be able to conduct a spray painting operation. So the compressor is required for him to do his regular business, but it's also there. It could be used easily to power a spray painting gun. This is the quantity of, of paint that we found on scene when we showed up at 21:24 on the 17th. And this is just a picture of what prep work was being done on other cars to bring them into that location to also do the same process as far as applying the spray paint. His proximate location to his neighbors places his neighbors at risk. He does have windows to the south, he does have windows to the west. As I explained, the best case scenario we could hope for is just a quick sweeping fire and then a residual fire with other products inside that business afterwards. The worst case scenario we could look at is an explosion. And with 12,000 cubic feet of area in which vapor can be trapped in, we're not talking about an insignificant event. Those are all the things that I have to present to you, any questions for me?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Dean, the first violation was December of '09. Would you have been in, and it talks about noted illegal spray booth?
Yeah.
Would that have been on an annual inspection or was that a complaint driven?
Actually, that was me. Prior to becoming appointed as fire marshal, I actually went out and inspected spray painting operations in the city. So the first engagement that I had with, with the owner was on that date. I talked to him specifically about the hazards associated with spray painting. I told him that he didn't have the required equipment to do the job, and it was not authorized in that space. So immediately, there was a cease and desist order as far as the spray painting was concerned.
So there was a cease and?
Desist order, and that, and that's what we typically give to a operation that poses an immediate fire risk and a hazard.
Does that have a timeframe on it?
It's forever.
Okay. Obviously, you had a conversation with him.
Yes.
But I, I'm trying to sit here, either he didn't understand it or he disregarded it.
I can't argue the case of what his mindset was.
Does the fire department on an annual basis call on businesses just as a courtesy?
Yes, all, all repair garages within the city will get an annual fire inspection. That's associated with their business license. So every business in that, with a repair garage, will basically get an annual inspection. Follow-up inspections occur to ensure that they're still compliant. So we will have conducted some other inspections as well.
Would the April 7th citation, would that also have been you?
Actually, yes, that was also me.
Was that complaint driven or were you just following up on the first one or, can you remember?
On, on that date, I, I'm sorry, I don't recall exactly how.
I'm going to assume that you went through the same dialogue once again.
Yes, the same dialogue once again. So again, we explained what the parameters were. During my involvement with the business owner, I talked to him about limiting the scope and size of the flammable products he has on site. So we minimize his product quantity that he has on site down to a point where he can't really conduct those operations. Getting rid of the pieces and parts that you need to be able to conduct a spray painting operation, we want those gone as well. So all of that would have been explained.
October, it happened again.
October, it happened again. On that occasion, the previous fire marshal went by and actually gave him the same set of orders.
I noticed here in February of 11, you had your annual fire inspection, no violations were noted.
No violations were noted, no, sir.
No paint in the building?
No, sir.
But then it happened again, June 17th?
Yes, sir.
Was that a complaint driven? Hard to say.
That would have been an annual inspection done by the fire inspector.
Same discussion, same?
Same discussion. Our fire inspectors are very well educated on the hazards associated with spray painting. It's, it's not something you can easily cover up. Overspray is hard to hide, as well as the pieces and parts needed to be able to conduct a spray painting operation. So all the equipment would be required, and the overspray on the floor, the walls, that type of thing is hard to cover up and hard to hide.
In October, fire inspection notice for illegal spray, was that another citation that you guys issued in October?
We had a subsequent inspection again. And on two separate occasions, we've issued citations.
Why would you not have issued citations the other times?
The last time around, when we had a inspection this year, starting in 2011, the cease and desist order may have been associated with the lack of equipment being on scene. Maybe they saw overspray. The inspector didn't quantify exactly, but he explained, there may, there were indications that there was some more spraying going on. So again, the reminder of cease and desist, no spraying is allowed inside this, this building whatsoever.
Thank you, Dean.
You're welcome.
Any additional questions, Officer Dean?
Can we go back to the picture of the cabinet with the paint in it? And that was from the October?
That was from October.
Of this year?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Now, these pictures were taken on the night that we went out and did a investigation. That's October 13th, 21:24 hours.
Thank you.
Thank you, Officer. Anybody else from the audience care to speak on this item?
Madam Chair, I see that Shawna Goldhammer is here from the zoning office. Would it be appropriate to have her step up for just a minute for a couple of questions?
Shawna, we haven't heard from you in a long time. Well, let's not go that far.
Good evening, my name is Shawna Goldhammer, I'm the zoning enforcement manager and I'm here for moral support. You've given, we've given you all the information that you need to hopefully make the decision that you seem, that you find appropriate in your recommendation to the city council regarding this matter. So I'm happy to answer any questions regarding zoning enforcement in this matter.
Shawna, are there any questions, Shawna?
Madam Chair? In March of 2010, there was a complaint filed with your office regarding sales inventory parked on the street.
That's correct.
Would that have been a complaint from a citizen?
Yes, it was. I took the call myself, so yes, it came in.
Do you actually then go out and investigate it or does some of your staff go?
One of my staff members has been assigned this case, Jason Bieber.
And at that point, would Jason have had a visit with, with this gentleman and explain to him?
And he worked with him to get the site compliant for the outdoor storage, as well as some landscaping things that had, he had a couple of trees that died. So we got him to replant those trees, et cetera, so.
On March 22nd, it talks about applicant met with zoning staff, which had been you, to explain tenant of former repair shop. And I, I think some of that wording might not be correct there. But was that a general sit-down meeting with him in regards to?
That is correct, yes. We explained the situation regarding the outdoor storage of parts, as well as the paint operation. And at that time, the applicant used the words that he promised that it would not happen again and that he would take care of the problem.
On May 5th, you did an inspection for conditional use permit stipulations by planning and zoning staff. We granted this conditional use permit. That was just a, you go back, double-check and make sure that the folks are adhering to the stipulation?
That the stipulations are being made.
It doesn't say here, but can we assume everything was in order at that time?
I can't recall. It would have been, any follow-up action that we would have done would have been in that timeline, so.
When you went back out in February, there was a complaint about vehicle parts and inoperable vehicles. Once again, that had come to you, you to send Justin out. We can assume that Justin, Jason?
Jason.
Jason, visited with him in regards to doing what he's supposed to do?
Yes, yes.
You went back there in March and issued a notice of violation. Is that a finable offense?
We, we always give a notice of violation prior to a citation. So we don't just go out there and issue a ticket, they know full well by the time they get the ticket what the problem is. And that we only issue a citation if they haven't corrected the violation.
You gave him two weeks to correct the violations. It looked like he asked for some additional time and you extended that time to him.
Not uncommon.
He then got it into compliance?
Correct. Again, we're trying to get them to be compliant, we're not after to fine anybody. What we're really trying to do is get people to comply. What we're really trying to do is get people to comply with the ordinance.
Shawna, good to see you. Good to have you back. Thank you.
Any additional questions?
Yes, Madam Chair. Shawna, I have one question. The, and maybe this wasn't part of that, but in September 16th of this year, a complaint was received. Now, was that strictly, was it a complaint on the spraying, or what? Because it says complaint received, surprise inspection was conducted.
Right, that was...
We couldn't get in. Was that for...
That was regarding, the complaint was that they were doing spray painting again in there. And we turned that over to the Fire Department for investigation.
Okay, and at that point, they couldn't get in to investigate what happened?
Yeah, you'll have to, I'm not sure what the Fire Inspectors had done on that evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, Shawna. I see we have some interested commissioners here tonight. Would you like to speak on any? Just taking it all in. Okay. Any additional members of the audience that would like to speak on this issue?
Madam Chair, if I may, I see a city attorney, I believe, here tonight. And if he'd be good enough to come up, I'd have a couple of questions for him.
Paul, will you come forward, please?
Thank you. Paul Bangford, Assistant City Attorney.
Paul, as I understand it, we've been asked to make a recommendation...
Correct.
To the council.
That is right.
If we were to recommend revocation, it's going to go to the council, and they're either going to agree or disagree. Or if we voted not to take the condition use away, it's still going to go to the council for their...
Correct. Ultimately, it's the City Council's decision, and whatever recommendation this commission has for them will be presented to them on December 19th.
Is that our options, either to recommend it or not recommend it? Or do we have the option of saying something like, you know, here's the deal, we'll give you one more chance?
Your options are to recommend or not recommend. When it gets in front of the City Council, they have a little more option. They can also, they can determine that the conditional use permit should be revoked or not revoked, or take whatever other action they deem necessary to obtain compliance. So in reference, when it gets to the City Council, there's an extra step that they have there. They don't have to do one or the other. They can also require additional actions of this particular owner.
Thank you, Paul.
Any additional questions, Paul? Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I will look for a recommendation from...
Sorry, before we get there, can I call Mr. Hanson back up one more time? And Steve, can you go to that photo of the paint again, in the cabinet? You said the October 17th violation of which this is a picture of was a neighbor, or somebody that had used his shop in the past for painting to come in?
No, it's the man who he kind of used as a subcontractor basis would come in and do painting.
Okay.
He was out of town when this occurred.
Right, but I guess what I'm saying is that seems like an awful lot of paint for somebody to have just brought in for a sort of a one-time deal? I was hoping you could explain that to me, or maybe I'm wrong.
I don't work there. I wasn't there.
Okay, I guess I was going by your...
My client might be able to explain more about it, but... Was this off the October 17th?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, I wasn't there. I can't answer. You might be able to ask my client. He can tell you.
Okay. That works. Can you call him back up to answer that?
Come on back up, sir. Commissioner has a question for you.
This is since 2009, this thing, in a few years, sorry, since 2009, those paints?
I think the Fire Marshal, Dean, testified that, gave comments that those were from the October 17th, 2011 visit.
Because those paints, since I bought, you know, I use some paint. I left over, I just keep them in that box. So since almost last two years, those paints, I didn't throw them away, I just kept them.
So there weren't any conversations with the Fire Inspectors that you needed to get rid of the paint?
Yeah, he told me, but maybe I should throw them. Most of them empty, but I should throw them away, but I just...
Okay.
If I did a mistake, you know, I ask you to give me one more chance.
Thank you. Okay, I will look for a recommendation from the Planning Commission to the City Council.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve for discussion purposes.
What would your recommendation be?
To, can we have further, we can have further discussion, correct?
Yeah, I mean, you can discuss it once you make the motion, but the motion needs to be to recommend to the City Council revoke or not revoke the conditional use permit. So it's not an approve or denounce. Yeah, you're either recommending the revocation, or you're recommending to not revoke it, so. So, and then once you get that, and then the second, then there are further discussions.
Make a motion to revoke.
Recommendation for revocation.
Yes.
Do we have a second on that?
I'll second that.
Yeah, any discussion?
You know, I guess this is between us, but it's hard for me to, after we issued, that was part of the group, the commission, when we issued this. And I do know that we did talk about the specific stipulations that, and a lot of, what the main one was, the outdoor storage. Now, the spray painting with stuff like that, it's hard for me to, after that many times, to get him to get it cleaned up. Yes, it's cleaned up today. I drove by it earlier this week when I received my packet. I drove by it again today. Yes, it is cleaned up today. I've driven it by it many times when it wasn't. So it's, I'm, I don't feel that he's kept his end of the bargain after we, we put a couple of minor stipulations on it, and it took him many times to do this. So I guess I'm just letting you know how I feel on this. I just feel that it's going to be a hard time for me to approve, I mean, to not revoke this license.
Thank you.
Or conditional use permit, excuse me.
Any additional conversation?
I get the impression, I think, I think our hands are tied a little bit as to what sort of relief we can or can't grant. I mean, it's either make a recommendation to revoke, or a recommendation not to revoke. Still got, it's still going to go to the City Council for their look at. If they wanted to do something a little different, it's certainly within their, well, I guess, their office to be able to do that, where I get the impression it isn't for us. Am I correct in that assumption?
I think we have two options. You clearly stated both.
But I feel that they should know how we feel as a Planning Commission, as issuing this conditional use permit feel, other than just saying, okay, we're going to do this. They should know how we feel and, on this issue, put it that way. Because we were the ones that did issue the conditional use permit.
I think it's important, too, to show some support for staff. I think the zoning office, the Fire people, they, this takes a lot of their time and effort. You would think after a couple, three times of having explained to you that it wouldn't have to continue to keep happening, I guess, is what bothers me a little bit.
Yeah, I have to really agree with that. You know, fool me once, shame on you. Fool me twice, shame on me. Now fool me six times, and really, really shame on me if I'm not doing something to fix it.
Well, I do believe that public safety is certainly an issue, and not often that public safety items do lie before the Planning Commission. And he's not an isolated business along 10th Street that operates in this fashion. And I, again, as I said, it's very uncommon for this, a revocation to come before the commission. I would say it's happened less than half a dozen times on my terms here. And so I do know that it's with great consideration by the Land Use Committee, or excuse me, by the planning staff and zoning enforcement, that something gets to this level of revocation. So I would agree. I think it's a serious issue. And again, we're on the record for saying what our concerns are. And we'll move it forward to the City Council where they get to make all the big decisions. Any additional conversation? So we have a motion and a second for recommendation to the City Council for revocation. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, same sign. Item number seven carries for a recommendation of revocation.
Erica Beck with the Community Development Department. I am here to present to you tonight a proposed project plan for TIF 13. This was reviewed by the Planning Commission, the boundary was, for this particular TIF at last month's meeting and approved. The catalyst for this district's creation is the renovation of the Raven Industries Headquarters Building from a manufacturing facility to a modern headquarters facility. It also includes renovation to the adjacent property just north of 6th Street, which we refer to as the York Building. It will also include site work being done by Raven Industries that will include the construction of a riverfront terrace on the south side of the headquarters building and an adjacent, and adjacent to the city-owned River Greenway system. Improvements are scheduled to occur in three phases over the course of the next five years, but be completed by the end of 2016. The district as a whole has a current base value of approximately $4.4 million. At a minimum, we project the value of the district at the end of its life to be over $14.7 million, which would produce just around $10 million in increment. The initial annual projected tax increment revenue following completion of Phase 1 is roughly $90,000 annually, and is expected to increase to over $176,000 after Phases 2 and 3 are completed. The proposed TIF plan outlines the total TIF eligible expenses, which may be expended as the TIF revenue allows. Potential TIF eligible expenses identified total approximately $3.5 million and include such items as parking and public recreation easement reconstruction, the south terrace construction that's adjacent to the city's River Greenway, facade easements for these buildings. Those are typical, I'll just give you a side note here, but those are typically funded through the Capital Improvement Program. That's typically how we fund those. But what we'd like to do is fund those through this TIF so that we can utilize our Capital Improvement Program budget for additional properties within the downtown area. It also includes professional fees that the city incurs for having external legal counsel review our TIF plan and River Greenway improvements that the city anticipates pursuing alongside the Raven, existing Raven Industries building. We're excited about this project moving forward. We have representatives from Raven Industries, along with Coke Hazard in the audience. We are recommending approval of the project plan for TIF 13 based upon compliance with South Dakota Codified Law, Chapter 11-9, the 2015 Downtown Plan, and our 2035 Growth Management Plan. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions of Erica?
You've become the TIF expert, haven't you, Erica?
I wouldn't go as far to call me an expert, but thank you very much, Mr. Dunlap.
Looks like an exciting, exciting project. Be fun to get it up and going.
Yes, we're very excited about it. Raven Industries is investing over $20 million into their downtown campus as a result of this project. And we're excited about having them pursue that venture downtown and show their support for downtown revitalization as well.
I believe that's over a five-year period, did I read, where they want to do the renovations over a five-year timetable?
Correct. Phase 1 would actually start at the beginning of next year. They've already started sandblasting a portion of the building just to the south. And if you have more questions on that, either Hugh Dotson or Jeff Hazard can respond to that. But if you have a chance to drive by, or even drive through the parking lot, you'll see where they've exposed the older portion of the building. That is all court site. And so that's been fun to watch, because we like to see those buildings brought back to their original historic character. And so they've done a really good job at pursuing the historical renovation of the building as well. So we're excited about that. Phase 2 is scheduled to start in 2015, and Phase 3 would be 2016 and be completed by the end of 2016 as well.
And how long is this TIF? How many years?
We're projecting it for 20 years.
20 years.
And that's for roughly $3.5 million in reimbursable expenses.
Thank you, Erica.
Any additional questions of Erica? Erica, I think this is exactly what we like to see these TIFs do. And again, we look forward to seeing it take shape.
Thank you.
Is the petitioner here? I guess Erica's the petitioner. Anybody in the audience here to speak on this item? No? I'll look for commission action.
Madam Chair, I'll move for approval.
Do we have a motion for approval? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion?
I agree with both you and Commissioner Dunlap. Seems like a very nice thing to have happen downtown.
Great. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. Item number eight carries. Item number nine.
Good evening again. Item number nine is an ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending Appendix B, the zoning ordinance of the revised ordinances in the city by adding street legal ATVs to the definition of personal passenger vehicle. There's a brief synopsis, and I won't go through it in every detail on here, but the residential parking requirements in the zoning ordinance allow parking of one recreational vehicle for a period of 48 hours for cleaning. Additionally, ATVs are currently only included in the definition of recreational vehicle. What this ordinance proposal would do would define it as a personal passenger vehicle, allowing it to be parked similarly to a car or a personal truck. This ordinance proposal has been considered by the City Council's Land Use Committee and has been recommended by that committee to move forward to the Planning Commission and then the full City Council for consideration. So the essential details of the ordinance revision are within the context of the report that you were given. And that concludes that report.
Any questions for Dave?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Have we had a groundswell of requests to get ATVs re-categorized in this particular way?
You know, I think I might have to defer to Shawna Goldhammer to address exactly what the requests have been on that.
I will say I sure see a lot more of them on the street than...
Madam Chair, is an ATV legal to be on the street, David? Would you...
Well, this ordinance would define it only as the ATVs that are currently street legal.
Street legal would mean lights, a turn signal, licensed?
Those types of things, yes.
Insurance?
Insured?
They should have insurance.
David, what we're saying is change this to allow these to be parked in the driveway, just like a car. That doesn't mean parked alongside the car up in the yard, does it?
No, no, they'd still have to... No, right. They would define them as a personal passenger vehicle, and then they would be treated similarly to a personal car or truck.
Thank you.
I'm wondering how enforcement works on this? I mean, how do you distinguish between street legal and non-street legal?
Again, I'd have to defer to Shawna on that one. So I haven't had a lot of involvement with this one, but...
It's got license plates on it.
Yeah, license plates. Again, Shawna Goldhammer, Zoning Enforcement Manager. License plates, I think it has to have a headlight. Doesn't have to have turn signals, because you can use your, you know, good old-fashioned, like it was. When I have driver's ed, stop, right, left, but no, anyway. Yeah, so you don't need turn...
Yeah, so you don't need turn signals. You need a bright light, you need a headlight, you need to have it licensed to be on the street.
If you're stopped, would you have to have proof of title and proof of insurance, like Denny just-
We're not talking about moving violations here. That's under the purview of the, of the police department. What we're allowing them is to park in residential districts similar to a car. Right now, the only place that we list ATV is in a recreational vehicle, and recreational vehicles can only park in a driveway, when the driveway's in the front yard, for a period of 48 hours for cleaning and loading.
Shawna, are scooters considered personal passenger vehicles and motorcycles and-
We did add motorcycles, I mean, I, to me, a motorcycle is like a personal passenger vehicle. It doesn't call out a motorcycle in the recreational vehicle definition in the ordinance. But it does call out an ATV. So, that's why we, we threw in in this ordinance amendment, you'll notice, that it also includes motorcycle and street legal ATVs, just to clarify. I mean, we've never had a problem with enforcement regarding people complaining or trying to park their motorcycle in their driveway.
Shawna, if I have an ATV parked in a trailer, and I pull it up in my driveway, with this change, am I now legal to do that?
No. Not if your driveway's in your front yard, because you still can't park a trailer in your front yard. And that was part of the discussion with the land use committee, too, and they decided that trailers were not such a good idea. We didn't want trailers to be allowed to be parked in the front yard. Front yard setback in a driveway, similar to personal passenger vehicles. However, street legal ATVs, they were okay with that. So, the, this ordinance came forward only with the ATV provision.
Well, obviously, if you guys have been working on it, I, I think of Denny's question, had there been an upswell of people with ATVs?
Well, I recall that we have had, at the suggestion of Commissioner Jameson, we have discussed recreational vehicles, and if we can make a change to recreational vehicles, and how long they can sit in your driveway. So, I think this is an extension of that item in question.
And Councilor Jameson is here. When we had this last discussion, and, and RVs, and where we can and can't park them in Sioux Falls, this topic comes up for discussion probably every four, five years, how to handle it, where, where it is appropriate. The last time, we came up with the 48-hour rule, and that was just in April of this year, and the ATVs were also part of the discussion, at least the street legal ones, but that kind of got missed out in the, in the provisions in the writing of the ordinance. So, we're just kind of cleaning up that. I think it was always intended that street legal ATVs would be treated like personal passenger vehicles, it just didn't get included when we did the 48-hour rule. Pretty much, he's shaking his head.
Thank you, Shawna.
Thank you, Shawna. Any additional questions to Shawna? Thank you. Anybody from the audience want to speak on this item? Come forward, Commissioner.
Hello, thank you for considering this topic. Just a real quick clarification and explanation, there is really no groundswell. It's really a cleanup, if you will. Who would have thought that we'd be having street legal ATVs driving around in our city? I mean, nobody, probably. And so, it's just an evolution of transportation and way it's occurring, and I had a constituent call and say, you know, I've got a street legal vehicle that's used for moving myself, a passenger, and I can't even park it in my driveway. And I thought, well, if, as long as it's a passenger vehicle, it makes sense. It is a little odd that it's a four-wheeler. The street legal provisions of it makes this thing work. It's the, it's the street legal tires, the rearview mirror, the headlight, the brake light, all those things that allow it to become street legal, that makes it acceptable as personal transportation and a personal motor vehicle, much like a motorcycle or scooter. And so, I was just looking to give relief to this person, and to bring, bring the code and regulations up to current time standards, so. No groundswell by any means, and if, and if in some date, the future council or somebody says, you know, we don't want these ATVs on the roads because of a danger of some other sort, and we're no longer going to allow them to become street legal, well, then this would be kicked, this would kick them out. So, any, anything else?
Any questions of Commissioner Jameson?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll look for commission action on item number nine.
I would move for approval of item number nine.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. Item number nine carries. Look for a motion for adjournment.
So, moved.
We have a second?
Second.
Moved in second, favor say, signify by saying yes.
Yes.
We are adjourned, thank you.